Your Honor, I'm going to confirm that all council members are present.
Thank you. And I didn't hit the button. So we started off splendid. All right. Hopefully, everyone was able to hear that. Okay, we'll move along. All right. See, oh, here we go. Some notes for tonight before we move to the consent agenda. I'd like to note that an executive session has been added.
Your Honor, did you want to do the flag salute?
Yeah, we can do that. Number two, I was going to just let everyone know about the consent and then that. Okay.
We won't hold it against you, John.
Ow, Susie, we will go back. All right, so executive session has been added to the end of tonight's meeting for the obligation pursuant to our WC 230110. All right. Consent agenda. Move to approve.
Second.
Right, all in favor?
Aye.
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 And any opposed? All right, motion carry is unanimous. All right, citizen comments at this time, if you'd like to comment on an item that is not on the agenda tonight. I'd invite you to come forward if you're attending council chambers or indicate in the chat box or by star nine if you're attending remotely. All right, with those attending in council chambers. Right. And do we have anyone remotely that? All right. Item number sixteen tonight. Selection of mayor. That can be a little odd being I'm running this so but switch back and forth as pro tem. I'd like to make a motion to approve AB 22153 confirming Heather Pullen as the mayor of them. Ooh, Alan beat you there. All right. Have anything, any other nominations? And we have the second. We'll comment. They're forward to having you. You're going to do a great job. I know the side that you are and you also stepping up and. On me. All right, motion to approve AB 22153 confirming Heather as the mayor. In favor.
Aye.
Those. Motion. Pass. We appreciate it. All right. Hey, moving on to the main agenda, item D seventeen, AB 154, final reading ordinance adopting the 2023-2024 annual budget. Rich, I believe, is with us remotely.
Mr. Gould will be joining us remotely.
All right, do you find the staff report at this time?
I will. I just wanted you to know that it's breaking up quite a bit. I didn't hear half of what went on just a few minutes ago. So I hope you guys can hear me. Okay, sorry, I'm not there, but I'm kind of feeling under the weather. Okay, let's see, we've been discussing this budget, buying the budget since October, working on it since August, September. The proposed 2023-2024 draft preliminary biennial budget was delivered to the city council. October 3, the city council discussed the preliminary budget at the budget workshop on October 11. Then the proposed preliminary budget, biennial budget was delivered to the city council on November 14. A public hearing was held on November 1 to receive comments regarding the proposed budget. The city council deliberated on the proposed budget following the public hearing. Council comments and direction were incorporated into the 2023-2024 preliminary biennial budget ordinance. A second public hearing was held on November 15 in conjunction with the final, with the first reading of the budget ordinance. Mayor McFarlane communicated highlights of his budget message. And prior to the public hearing, adoption of the budget ordinance is scheduled for tonight. Okay. So the biennial budget is consistent with council direction and complies with the state law and city financial policies. The proposed expenditures are balanced against revenue and resource estimates for each of the city funds. The city's 10% reserve in the general fund is also maintained. This budget includes property tax revenues with a 1% statutorily allowed increase over the 2022 levy amount. The budget will be amended as needed prior to adoption to reflect council action taken regarding property tax levies, but we didn't need to do that, so just disregard that. Decision cards were discussed and agreed upon as part of this budget process at a budget workshop held on November 8. I was then implemented the financial adjustments into the draft preliminary budget and presented to the mayor and council and the public on November 21, and that's been attached to this ordinance. Per RCW Chapter 36 dot 40 dot 250 pertaining to biennial budgets, the city council will be able to review and modify the 2024 budgeted revenues and expenditures as part of the mid-biennium modification that will occur in the fall of 2023. Additionally, additionally, council will continue to review and approve budget amendments throughout the biennium as needed. When the final 2023-2024 budget documents compiled, it will be published on the city's website and a copy will be available at the front counter at City Hall. Did you guys hear me?
All right.
Good.
Also, any clarifying questions?
Yeah, I want to clarify, you mentioned budget needs to be amended prior adoption to reflect council action taken regarding property tax levies?
That, yeah, that's we already, we already went over the property tax levy, so that's, I just said that should be removed. That doesn't matter. Because we did already.
What's in the budget right now?
1%.
It reflects what we?
Yes.
Any additional clarify? All right, at this time, we will comment. Anybody will start here in the audience if anyone has anything. I see nobody here. How about online? Thank you.
Mike Thomas via telephone due to audio issues. I have a comment.
Go ahead.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Rosen. Michael Thomas, 1231, the Forest Drive SE, and I sent my comments in to council. In summary, I continue to remain concerned about the water budget. In the previous two hearings, there have been some changes to the water capital budget. Specifically, I noted some discussion around transfers from the capital REIT fund, which I know is allowed. But I'm concerned that those eventually have to be paid back. And my understanding is water has to be an independent enterprise utility that, you know, it can't, you can't borrow, you can't take funds from one part of the city and another and pay and use it to fund water. Obviously, loans are allowed as capital. This troubles me from several perspectives. In addition to recent activities, you know, the city has expressed a desire to acquire Salal. And also perhaps, you know, some additional follow-on actions such as, you know, a hostile takeover. I'm very concerned that the city really doesn't have the financial capacity to do either of these. And as I look at the budget in past history, I'm very concerned about, you know, the expenditures around water. The city needs to really, I hate to say, dilute its past errors around water. You know, specifically there is 1985, 1993, and substantial, you know, acquisition costs of Centennial. And many of the other things that frankly are having difficulty panning out, such as using the golf course water, that this is the motivation behind trying to acquire Salal, to simply hate to say dilute or soak the Salal membership in the city's, you know, water woes. And I really caution the city against that. And also, I really want to make sure the members of Salal, you know, understand perhaps some of the city motivations, you know, behind this. I personally don't want anything to do with the city's water financial woes. In addition, I noticed that in last meeting, I prefer that when the city attorney is responding to, you know, council questions, that the city attorney responds verbally and not, you know, via nodding. I did note that the last meeting. Thank you, and this concludes my comment.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. Do we have anyone else online? Anyone on the phone as well? Hmm. All the comment we have. Mr. Elwood, would you make the motion?
Thank you, Your Honor. Motion to approve AB 22-154, an ordinance adopting the 2023-2024 biannual budget and the 2023 salary schedule as a final reading.
Elwood.
Well, something we have to do every year. We are now have a new finance director who's taken the reins and assembled this budget together. We've battered it around in committee quite a bit, and I think it's ready to approve. Thank you.
None. Alan? Nothing to add at this time? Um. Before we discussion, I would like to make only amendment and forward. And we were reviewing the human service grants. It got lost in translation. I was at one time that we used the ARPAs fully on the administration's I probably phrased it incorrectly, therefore, the compass was funded at 25 instead of 30. I would like to amendment raise that 2530 to have them fully funded at administration's. Second that motion? Additional comments or?
Or parliamentary procedures? Do I need to?
Give you some word.
It wasn't a I need some word. It was, it was a suggestion, but I would need to know the words of the motion if we're going to accept.
Mayor Protem, could you repeat the question?
Yeah, what I like to do is to increase the funding for the human service grant from $5,000 to $30,000 for in this and use the ARPA for that.
You're asking.
Yes, how should I word that?
I think how you did it is perfect. And the city clerk is the one we have to please.
And vote on that?
It was, it was a motion.
Perfect. Right.
Mayor Protem, council and staff, we just, you guys a reminder.
Sure. Move that even closer. All right, then you've already heard my comments on that. Anyone else have anything additional to add?
And we have the ARP.
Yes, we do, and I believe the administration also supports.
Nick Ford.
All right, so motion, I'll gather as best I can, or do you want to just read it back? Vote on the amendment first, correct? Yes. You want me to tumble through it again or read it back what you had there? What's the best way to proceed? Got it. Okay, then vote all in favor of the amendment.
Aye.
Aye.
Close. All right, amendment passes. Done it. All right, now back to the motion that table and members. Um, I appreciate, first of all, the hard work that everyone's put forth on this. This is always a big endeavor. And it is a budget. I am in favor of the budget, voting in person in favor of that. Nice. But I do have some concerns, and I believe the administration has also alluded to some of these concerns that I'll bring up. We are seeing clearly housing slowdown will affect revenue to the city. Looks highly likely that we may enter into a recession. Once again, that will affect you. I have some concerns with some of the costs of the city that are really starting to escalate quickly. Some of it is just due to inflation. And if we look at payroll in the city, this in the last two years, and a lot of it is inflation, on above $1.3 million. That is a lot. At some point, I have some concerns that we as a city find it increasingly difficult to fund that. Want us to keep an eye on that and make sure that we are not a little bit beyond our means. Last thing I'd want to see is the city go ahead and hire individuals and have to be those are concerns of mine going forward. As I said, I believe those concerns are shared by the mayor, which he stated in his, as to us a month ago. That's all I have to say. If anyone else has anything to add.
I'd like to respond. So we, with the housing inventory decreasing, we know when the end of that is going to happen. CED Committee, I believe, we put it forward to have greater, deeper diagnostic discussion in 2023 on all the revenue coming in, tax revenue, impact fees and so forth. And I believe Mr. Miller will be coordinating that with next year's pro tem so that we have a really sharp understanding of all the dollars, because that is a potential threat to our operations and our business. The other element I'd like to address is the salary and so forth. In the corporate world, different, obviously, than here in the public sector. Oftentimes, you have budgets for headcounts and salary and other things that you intend to get to the next year. Sometimes that doesn't happen. Been in many situations where bonuses were denied, salary increases were denied, and headcount was frozen, meaning no more hiring staff, even though you had headcount and money to do that. But a business does that in order to protect itself, obviously. And that is something that we could explore potentially next year as we start seeing the inflation and the market change. Hopefully, it changes for the better, but if it doesn't, I would like to to think that we could get creative on certain things that we're approving tonight. Maybe have to table them or postpone them or figure out some way to navigate that crisis, should we?
Mr. Hovland. You have something?
Yeah, the only thing I really just want to point out and is that this year, we also got, we got the ARPA funds that help things. And, you know, as if we do go into some sort of recession without those ARPAs forward is one time thing will happen.
Thank you, Alan. Anyone else have anything to add tonight? Right, that is all. Motion to approve AB 22154, an ordinance adopting the 2023-2024 annual budget and the 2023 salary schedule as a meeting. Favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Close. Right, motion passes unanimous. Moving along. Item number 18, AB 1, AB 22155, ordinance authorizing issuance of bond anticipation note for Meadowbrook U-Lid. Miller, you would please provide the staff.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Protem and council, as we did with U-Lid number six. We are marching forward. You did authorize the formation of U-Lid number seven. And at your meeting on September 20, you approved a $1,053,700 contract with Ray and Osborne civil engineers for design of the U-Lid number seven improvements. What you have before you this evening is a method of funding that. It's exactly what we did in U-Lid number six. And that is to do a short-term public bond finance secured by the Water Fund to allow those design improvements to be designed and to move forward with the project. That's what you have before you this evening for.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Counsel, any clarifying questions? All right. None. Back to members of the audience like to comment and also those online, and I believe you want to participate online in the chat box or star nine on telephone. Do we have anyone online that'd like to comment?
Someone that?
All right. One, then, Mr. Elwood, leave. Do you care to make the motion?
Thank you, Your Honor. Motion to approve AB 22155, an ordinance authorizing the issuance of a water sewer revenue note of the city, fund the design phase of the Meadowbrook Sewer U-Lid number seven as a first and final reading.
Do I have a second? All right, Mr. Elwood, comment.
Um, not really. I think this thing has been hammered and battered quite a bit over the last couple of years, specifically the last year or so. I think it's ready to move forward, and hopefully, this will, this will work out well. And I think it's been spoken to by many others before, so there's nothing new for me to add.
All right, Alan, would you care?
I think Brendan said part of the process, we need to move forward.
So the council is thrilled not to hear from Brendan and I on this anymore. All right, any additional comments? All right. Motion to approve AB 22155, an ordinance authorizing the issuance of a water sewer revenue note city to fund the design phase of the Meadowbrook Sewer U-Lid number seven, a first and final reading.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Moving along tonight, here we go. Item 19, AB 22156, motion authorizing contract with Jacobs Engineering regarding sweater treatment clarifier number four. Mr. DeBerg, you have a staff report for us.
I do. Thank you, Your Honor. So in early 2020, McLaren Sunzing ordered the newly constructed clarifier number four as part of the wastewater treatment at high priority improvements phase one project. And shortly after construction, we built the tank to a watertightness test and found several cracks around the base of the clarifier, which were significantly more than we expected. So MSI immediately began performing remedial actions to try to seal up those cracks. And they, they've had a lot of success. However, it's still not quite enough to pass the watertightness test project specifications. Recently, they have stated that they have met project specifications, and they are not intending to do any further work on the, on the tank, seal it up. We, the city, disagree that they have met project specifications, so we've and then discussions with them. But at this point, the city attorney and I, it's a wise idea to get a third party opinion on whether or not this has passed. And if it has not been passed, is fracking going to affect longevity? So that's what this contract is for. It's for about $11,100 to just that. Jacobs was not involved in the design or the construction of any of the project. However, they did define previously on the integrity of design and stated that in their opinion, the design is sound. So at this point, we're just seeking their opinion on construction and the longevity.
Yeah, um, clarifying, clarifying question. When we gave them the contract, they were clear as to what yes, what we mean. Have we held back any funds? Or, I mean, what's the total cost of this contract was how much?
That's about $1 million, and we were currently withholding about $100,000.
Okay, and then it was how much again?
About $10 million for the entire project.
Was there any bonding by them or anything to, you know, we have to go out and redo this. $200,000 is a very small amount.
They do have a performance bond for 100% of the cost of.
Could you describe the watertightness test? Who does it? How? Then as much to it?
So the watertightness test consists of two parts. There is a quantitative part and a qualitative. The quantitative part is to fill the tank with water and measure it for three consecutive days, and they're allowed a percentage loss every day. The percentage of the volume is allowed to be lost every day due to leakage. We do expect very minor amount of leakage in concrete structures. That's nature of concrete. If I remember right, the specification is 0.05% of volume per day. So that's pretty tight, but not 100%. The qualitative portion of that is kind of a hands-on. So what you do is you go around the structure and you look at cracks. And if you can transfer any moisture from one of the leaking areas to a dry part of the structure, that is, that's a fail of So the clarifier has passed quantitative portion of the test, so the volumetric test is passed. However, the qualitative portion is not passed. I can still walk around and transfer moisture from a crack to dry portion of. As for potential remedial actions. One of the options that we're looking at is a coating on the inside of the clarifier. And estimates we've gotten for that are right at $200,000 mark. And estimates we've gotten for that are right at $200,000 mark. Um, do that correctly, we should have some design work done, have some project specifications written. So that would probably cost in the neighborhood of $1,000. So we're looking at about $250 to get a coating. Um, if that were to fail, if we did code it, not work to fail. The, one of the other options is to completely clear the clarifier down and start over. Um, do not have the cost for that off my head. Suffice it to say, it would be several million dollars. And one more option. I may put it out there. Um, if Jacobs opines that the longevity of the tank is not going to be affected by the, the existing cracks, leave it. Pretty up the outside, let it leak a little bit and be on our merry way. Always an option.
Thank you. And thank you for the education and the journey here. Um, so curious about quantitative approach with it being a three days water and volumetric test, see if it leaks. First question is, is that an industry standard or is that something, how does, how does that three day come into play?
That's in industry standard. So the project specifications reference a I believe it's American Concrete Institute and the ACI standard. So that's industry standard.
Okay, and then let's say we're at day six and it starts to crack. Or day 145, what, what are the, what is the term limit on the 100% bond that you had, had mentioned? And if I'm understanding that's correctly, is that if it's complete failure at a certain period of time, they'd have to redo it? Or they're gonna have to foot the bill for that. Is there a window of time that, or a range of time that we have to be sensitive to on that?
Uh, once, once the project is accepted by the city council, we release the bond. However, there is a two-year warranty period on this particular project after acceptance. So that starts on the date of acceptance.
And third question, the warranty piece, do we have in place a protocol or a schedule to be, I mean, obviously if it's leaking, it's leaking, but are there going to be some testing that's going to happen over that two years so that at least something's happening is cat, and we catch it during that two-year window?
Yeah, we'll certainly keep an eye on it. Um, it's been a couple of years since the tank was built, probably a year, a year and a half since bulk of their repair attempts. And leaking, in my opinion, has not gotten any worse. It's about status quo from the last time they attempted to repair it. So not seeing any worsening of the structure. I'm not seeing any improvement of the structure. It's staying about as it has been since they.
Thank you.
All right. Mary?
Um, you answered one of Brendan's questions very well. Thank you. Um, my question goes back to the coating inside. Is there a so longevity or lifespan to that that we can consider in the way?
I'd be wrong, but I believe the coating is designed for a 50-year life.
Cylinders were supposed to be ranging about 70 years worth.
Correct. Thank you. Anything? All right, it's time if any members of the audience would like to comment, is online? Anyone here in person? Do we have anyone online? Yes, we have a. Okay, Thomas, you're up.
Thank you. Uh, Michael Thomas, 1231 La Forest Drive, SE. Uh, thank you, Mr. DeBerg, for your answers to the council and thank you, council, for several excellent questions. Uh, I had a few more on that. Um, I, I did read the, the item and I had maybe a couple of questions if council would would leave to ask Mr. DeBerg. Um, one, I was curious about the testing only being above the water line. Would it make sense to drain and examine the tanks in their entirety? And I'm not certain if it's a tank and more like a pond. Is there any of it that's maybe below ground? Um, it seems like if you're going to the trouble to, you know, hire a third-party company to test and inspect, why is this just limited to just above the water line? Maybe there's a good reason for that. Maybe, you know, we can't, simply can't empty the tank without shutting down the plant. Don't know, but, but I, I think it's a reasonable question. Uh, my, my second question is, um, is there any concern about the structural integrity of, of this concrete tank or pond? Again, not familiar with its design. Are there any concerns about earthquake resistance? And then third, um, if council would, again, these questions are for council if they would wish to ask Mr. DeBerg. Um, third, is there, um, where is this leaking to? And what is it leaking? I assume it's, um, uh, it's some stage of sewage treatment and, you know, is this leaking to the ground, the groundwater, and then to the river representing less than full-treated wastewater? This concludes my questions and, uh, and again, thank you, Mr. DeBerg, for your excellent answers and thank you, council, for asking great questions. This concludes my questions.
Thank you, Michael. Any additional comments online on the phone? No, I don't see anybody else for. All right, thank you, guys. All right, council member Loudonback, if you would please make the motion.
Thank you, Your Honor. Motion to approve AB 22-156, authorizing professional services contract with Jacobs Engineering Group Incorporated for third-party examination of the clarifier number four in a form and content acceptable to the city attorney in an amount not to exceed $11,100.
Have a second. Thank you, Ms. Loudonback.
Uh, Don did a good job of explaining it. We're actively addressing the issues as they've been presented. And the third-party engineering firm will give us some guidance on moving forward on our next steps. This is important to have a unbiased third party. As it sounds as though there might be a slight disagreement as to the passing of tests and we want to make sure that we are being as thorough as possible when dealing with this project. And I, for one, will look forward to, uh, seeing that report and also ensuring that the structure is going to be satisfactory for us to accept at whatever point.
I'll just add that I think there's a certain amount of timeliness to this, so I'd like to see us go forward. And that pertinent, uh, pertinent information as soon as possible as well.
To the table down there.
Thank you, Your Honor. Uh, I would wonder if Mr. DeBerg would answer the questions from, from the audience? Wouldn't mind. I tried to capture him. I think the first one was testing above the water line. Second one had to deal with structural integrity resistance, but I didn't catch all of that. The third one was where is it leaking and what is it leaking?
Uh, yes, so my understanding of the first question is that Mr. Thomas intended to say, why are we testing above the ground line only? I did hear something about excavation, so I'm assuming he was not skating down to the footing. Um, previously, we did inspect work below the footing and it did pass both tests. That's, it's the structure is all, it did pass qualitative testing below the ground line, which is why we allowed them to backfill. Um, I suppose there could be some leaks down there. Uh, we haven't seen any evidence of that. We haven't seen any wet grounds around it. Or then where water is running down from the up-ground cracks. Um, is concern about the structural integrity. Um, again, previously we had Jacobs look at this and they find that the design is sound. Uh, this contract is looking at it from a construction standpoint and from a, what it looks like a standpoint. So that is one of the questions that will be answered with this contract. And what is it leaking? Currently, it's leaking more water. Adult water, potable water currently. So nothing more than if you were to run your hose on the ground. Um, and where to it is leaking into the ground.
Then just an extension of the first question about testing above the water line. I wasn't able to capture everything, but assumption in the clarifier, it's a tank that goes up to a certain level. And that would be a secondary water line. Is, is there any testing that's happening above that? I'm sure there's a control mechanism, so it doesn't go above that water line, but I just would, you know.
Uh, we are not testing above the operating level of the clarifier. Um, I guess we've tested to six inches above the operating level of the clarifier. Um, anything higher than that is unnecessary. It's it's impossible for it to get higher than our normal operations.
Thank you very much.
Any additional questions? Anyone else? All right, I do have just one comment, uh, long-term, just no surprises. So you guys know I don't, I won't feel comfortable except unless we have some sort of warranty or financial assurances. This is a 70-year structure. It's already having problems that have sure staff is already looking into these things, but I personally would like to see some sort of assurances. Once these folks leave, now we still have some sort of I have. Where at? No additional comments. I have motion to approve AB 22-156, authorizing a professional service contract with Jacobs Engineering Group operated for third-party evaluation. Clarifier number four in a form and can acceptable to the city attorney in the amount not to exceed $11,100. All those in favor?
Hi.
Those. Is unanimous. All right. Item number 20, AB 22-157, ordinance amending North Bend Municipal Code 8 20 and regarding fireworks. Mr. Miller, the staff for us.
Yes, uh, Your Honor and council members, this particular item can be found on page 327 of, uh, sort of War and Peace, uh, length of an agenda that we have this morning, this afternoon. And we find here that this has been to our Public Health and Safety Committee a couple of times. It was presented to them on May 11. And then again on June 14. Two. And once again on November 8th, 2022. Throughout that discussion, there was a lot of talk about whether or not to ban fireworks and this ordinance is presented to you as a pretty much identical to the Snoqualmie ordinance, which bans aerial fireworks, not those ground illuminated fireworks that people use. So the definition in chapter 7077 uh, relates to that, regulates the sale and possession use of fireworks. And it tailors that use to eliminate the use of aerial fireworks. That's what the effect of this is. This must be enacted a year prior to uh, it going into effect, limiting sale and the, um, use of firework. So this is happening now so that we can kind of get ahead of the issue. And it was recommended by the Public Health and Safety Committee meeting at the three meetings that we indicated the last November 8 for approval and placement on consent agenda, but we felt as though it was discussed enough and there were enough opinions on it, that it should be on the regular agenda. That's where you find it. So it's open to your deliberation and act.
Thank you, David. Counsel, any clarifying questions?
Yes. Will this ordinance mimic that which has been adopted by the city of Snoqualmie?
That's.
Which is overseen by the same police force and so there will be some consistency in enforcement between the two cities if this is adopted. Um, does King County currently allow aerial fireworks within unincorporated King County?
King County does not allow aerial.
Thank you. How many incorporated areas within King County currently permit aerial firework?
We had three as of our research earlier this year, one of which is ours.
Thank you.
General clarifying questions? All right, uh, any members of the audience wish to comment? And I, we were gonna move online then. What do we have? Thomas, you're up.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Rosen, uh, Michael Thomas, 1231 La Forest Drive, SE. Uh, by the way, you have my written comment on the record, so I'll not read all of it to you. Um, I am concerned about these changes to the fireworks code are not entirely clear uh, on banning those aerials. Um, common fireworks cover a lot and under RCW 77136, at least it's framed by the state, now consumer aerials are allowed. I noticed that you deleted the designation of special fireworks, which perhaps, but not clear to me, was a reference really to professional level fireworks. And I didn't believe you intended to ban professional use of fireworks within the city, including aerials or other types. So I read, I view that the changes are not clear, uh, to citizens. Um, I'm concerned because, uh, I think there is also a middle ground on this is, uh, aerial fireworks, uh, can be used safely if you choose not to use them during extreme dry conditions. And this is something that we've done in our neighborhood by mutual agreement. If it's too dry, folks limit themselves to, you know, fountains, cakes, ground fireworks that have limited aerial report. I'm concerned also that your text is written, uh, using the such as does not allow for fountains, cakes, or things of limited report. That, that troubles me a lot. Uh, I found that fireworks are really integral to us as a community or neighborhood to come together during COVID. And we want to continue our tradition of responsible use of fireworks. Uh, so I, I believe there's lack of clarity actually in the text of the ordinance and you start to look at this, you know, did you intend to accidentally ban professional use by licensed professionals of fireworks, whether private or public? That's deleting the section of special fireworks. Uh, also, I view fireworks are quite safe. Um, there's some interesting, uh, data from the American Pyrotechnics Association that should be in your packet. Uh, basically, they're, uh, they're safer than grilling baseball and cooking on a Ranger oven. In fact, the use of commercial, uh, use of consumer, consumer use of, of, uh, fireworks by poundage, they're considerably safer if you actually look at the, the data of, of by rate, including also fire. So I'm, I'm not certain that this has a, a full basis and I would actually table this and think more carefully about it. Uh, I want to make sure that, of course, that we continue to use fireworks. Uh, I enjoy them a lot. And I feel that there is responsible use that if you ban more of them, you may end up with more illegal use, which is not, which really then, you know, presents far more risks. And that's, uh, that really concludes, uh, the majority of, majority of my comments. And also, by the way, the city has referenced the, uh, the information from the Washington State Patrol, which is a really excellent guide to what is and is not currently legal. One challenge I do see is potential enforcement. Uh, there's nothing at the state level, so how do you, how do you intend to, you know, instruct people, tell people not to use aerials? There just doesn't appear to be any regulatory, uh, guidance at the WSB level.
Can you conclude?
Yep, yeah, I'm just about done. Thank you very much, Mr. Rosen. This concludes my comment and thank you for your consideration. Take care.
Thank you, Mike. Any additional comments online? Anyone else? Uh, Councilmember Cullen, will you please make the motion?
Motion to approve AB 22-157, ordinance amending NBMC 8.20.010 purpose definitions prohibition relating to the city's fireworks code as a first and final reading.
Second.
All right. There do you comment?
I do. I think this ordinance is important and I believe should receive a yes vote from all our council members tonight. Ordinance is intended to keep our community safe from forest fires. We live in the forest and are surrounded by. I'm aware that Fourth of July celebrations are an important part of our community. Bring neighbors together, they bring friends and family together, and they help us celebrate and remember what a great country we all live in. Risk of forest fires is too great, and banning aerial fireworks should not interfere with those celebrations. It will just need to be slightly redefined. Reasons we need this are undeniable. Summers are getting hotter and drier. Forest fires on the west coast have been increasing in size, severity, and length of time over the past several years. Firefighter, forest fires put our towns at risk, risk the lives of our firefighters, not to mention the people living in forest communities such as ourself. Last example being the Bolt Creek Fire, which was last summer. Want to add, the city supports this ordinance, side fire and rescue supports this ordinance, and the police support this ordinance. This ordinance will help prevent unintended injuries and deaths and mitigate the loss of aerial fireworks. City has had discussions to provide a professional fireworks celebration. The cities, citizens of North Bend love it. Hopefully.
Mary.
You hit all the finer points that I was gonna try to attempt to hit. Um, I'll just add that um celebrations, town celebrations like the ones that we treasure in Festival of Mount Si, this in no way reflect that that will not happen. In other words, this is something that we'll have to seek permitting like they normally would do and forward and have that celebration. So we're not deterring people from enjoying that at all. And uh all I'll say from that, other than the traumatizing of veterans out there that I've spoken to through the last ten years. That's a concern I always keep in my heart. And animals, I hear stories about animals disappearing and running away, and it's like the um fallout, if you will, from the Fourth of July. But anyway, it's a time to celebrate. We can all be creative, and how do we do that going forward? It's laser shows or drone shows or a neighborhood barbecue or a block pretty barbecue, or maybe a pickleball. I mean, there's ways to get creative and celebrate. Maybe this is an opportunity for it that way, too.
Mary. Um, this issue has been in front of the council for years, and I think it has always been an early emotional issue, and it continues to be. I personally do not have a position one way or the other. Either way with it, but what I'd like to do is to reflect what community would like to see on this issue. We have a question on our community survey when near future addresses this very issue. Aside from that, I feel that if we're going to pass we need to have data. I spent some time looking. I cannot find this to show health, safe concern that can't be mitigated. For instance, fires and so forth, as in the past, we have limited or actually banned fireworks during dry season. Continue to do that. As far as the actual health issues, I checked the stats I asked I could at Harborview. And starting in two thousand and eleven, twenty-seven injuries, twenty sixteen was eighteen, nineteen was forty-four, twenty twenty-two was between forty and fifty. Those numbers have say stay the same because the, some of them over three days, some of them are over a week. Essentially, it stayed the same, even though more and more cities and counties have continued to bans in place. It has not affected number of injuries. Because my opinion is, so these injuries are coming from illegal fireworks. The concerns that most of us express here are illegal fireworks. This won't change. Um, Mayor and Pyrotechnic Association, I just today, so I have not added this, but also seems to show essentially no change in the number of injuries nationwide between nineteen seventy-six and twenty twenty-one. I mention all this because I don't see the data backing this up, but I do understand the emotional however, everyone has a strong opinion on this, one side or the other. I would like to see, since I don't, I can't find the data. Would like to engage with the public and see what they would like. That can easily be solved with the community survey, which should be coming out shortly. There is a very specific question about on there. I would like to see tonight, and I will ask my fellow council members at court to wait until we hear back from citizens on the survey, we act on this. As I said, I don't care one way or the other. Community overall wants to see this ban, although we'd like to hear from them before I vote. Don't want to make an emotional vote on this. I would like to back it up, data which I can't find, or at least with citizens asking us to do as elected. That would be my position. I'd like to see anyone else wish to comment? Yes.
I would like to make a motion to vote immediately.
Call the question. One else, we're gonna go right to the call the question, so. That is the procedure.
The ca- call the question requires a second, no debate, and must pass by the um majority or the
Do I have a second on that?
Me.
All right. Those in favor? Supposed.
Aye.
Question is, well, um, I believe at this point we continue with comment. If you have.
Yeah, um. It's a tough one. At the same time, I don't want to live in the only incorporated area in all of King County that allows aerial firework. You know. And then I would hope potentially that if there is consistency across incorporates and King County, that they wouldn't be acquirable and they wouldn't be aerial. If it were up to me, I would vote to ban fireworks entirely. Offensive, abusive, loud, out of control, pets have suffered, I have suffered. It's outrageous. The parks are a mess. All the streets are a mess. People don't laugh to themselves. There's a huge cost that is suffered by those who think that, you know, somehow the behavior that is unleashed is somewhat untoward, in my opinion. I think this resolution as proposed breaks a balance. It's not ban all fireworks, personal use, bans aerial fireworks. Reinforce Councilmember Colin's comment. There is a climate crisis. Climate has changed. We are living under different conditions, and folks, if we can't make the smallest of adjustments in our behaviors and expectations going forward, we're gonna go down faster than we're gonna otherwise go down, folks. You know, you have to be willing to adjust. I don't need research on fireworks. Tell me that maybe launching aerial explosives in the middle of the summer in this part of the planet isn't such a good idea. We experienced the Bolt Creek Fire. We watched it burn right over there. You could see it here. People I work with were engaged on the front lines depressing that fire. That's putting human lives at risk. That's the line I don't so I've, you know. We need to come to terms and strike a balance for the reasons that I've stated. I will be supporting this ordinance. I would encourage my council members to do so going forward. I think it's entirely defensible, and again, it's gonna make it easier on our law enforcement. You need to be able to enforce consistent laws, not only between here and Snoqualmie, but the uncertain nature of the southern boundary, in particular of this town. I believe we have folks who aren't sure whether they, you know, you live across the street and you're in the county and I'm not in the county. Those will be, you know, so if you step across the middle of the street, the people across the street, if they come across the middle of the road, they can be functioning out of rockets, you know, um. Let's come together, do what makes the most sense, and provides the greatest good and the mount greatest amount of safety that we're capable of while still creating the opportunity to come together in community, recognize this nation and its history and celebrate together.
Mark, any additional comment? Brendan, you're up.
Thank you. Um, there are a lot of compelling cases here, and the case that I'm hearing is common sense ordinance. But I will say, and I, and I hear, I hear the conversations specifically for our law enforcement agents that have to reconcile two different ordinances between Snoqualmie and here. I live on the border of unincorporated King County. Um. They do not allow fireworks, yet my backyard turns into a war zone every year. Um, the river turns into smoke. It feels like a movie out of a Vietnam movie or something. It's insane. And and yet, the the sheriff's department is unable to manage that. So that's troublesome to me, and my pets are terrorized as well. Um, I am concerned that uh we have developed a community survey, and the survey was supposed to go out earlier this year. We would have that particular point, a data point back, which I think is valuable. So my question is, what is the timeline of adopting this ordinance relative to having at least community data back? Because if I understood your introduction, there's a year delay, or there's some sort of uh window of time there?
Since we cannot enact this until a year after it's adopted, we would not be able to enforce it this upcoming summer. So if you do have a survey that occurs between now and then, you will have that data taken into account. I mean, a council can um rescind an ordinance as as easy as adopt it, so the options are still there.
Thank you. I I would, I'd be concerned about rescinding an ordinance. Um, and then thank you for explaining that that that's an option. Um, it would make sense to me that we wish to have our community survey conducted. Um, because there's a lot of other data points on there that we need. And so if it doesn't impact the timing of the enforcement of this ordinance, we also have the ability to enact a ban based on climate conditions and weather conditions and dryness. So so we do have some tools at our disposal. Uh, and so I just put that on the table for consideration for this discussion.
Brendan, any additional comment? We have motion to approve AB twenty-two, one fifty-seven ordinance amending North Bend Municipal Code eight twenty ten definitions prohibition relating to the city's firework code as a first and final reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Right. This is four three. All right. Item number twenty-one, AB twenty-two, one fifty-eight, resolution adopting transportation element aid. Mr. Moore, do you have a staff report for us?
You, thank you, honor and counsel. Uh, this will be a bit long-winded as there's a lot to indicated. This is a resolution arising adoption of an element update. Uh, Karen Pierce is the consulting that we select earlier this year to guide us through this process. It might be lifted. Uh, the city of North Bend Transportation Element provides a framework to guide transportation investments twenty years in accordance with community's vision and goals. City is required to issue element two thousand twenty-four to align with and comply with the Washington's on meeting these requirements, the transportation update is a vital role in maintaining the city's eligibility for grant funding and identifies the mission systems necessary to a growth development. Transportation element provides the foundation for updating the city's six-year transport movement program working toward the two thousand forty-four planning horizon. Transportation element provides a list of projects that will be used in three. Uh, the transportation element is blind, provide insight into the city's intentions and commitments for the public agencies, as well as private entities, make decisions, coordinate development. Keeping a shared vision. Also provides foundation for development regulations in North Bend Municipal Code, cities. Uh, the process we went through with Karen Pierce, uh, the first step was an outreach. City selected three local organizations to interview to understand the stakeholder perspectives, transportation priorities. Uh, these organizations were the downtown foundation, Lee Valley Transportation, Lee Valley Chamber of Commerce. These three stakeholders were concerned with, not in this order, but parking, wayfinding signage, freeway monumentation to the city, expanding public with transit with the city, being more pedestrian and bicycle and filling in sidewalk gap in the downtown. And on March thirty-first, staff had a transportation element policy workshop. Policy workshop was an opportunity for city staff to review existing and future transportation needs and to consider transportation policy updates to these goals, visions. In addition, staff worked on allocating of housing units and jobs thousand forty-four throughout the city, numbers based on our land use assumptions, S R C guidance. Check through traffic volumes throughout. On May twenty-sixth, the transportation element was introduced to the planning commission. It's meaning focused on presenting a summary of the city's transportation opportunities and constraints, introducing multimodal level of service concept, air network. This workshop presented an opportunity for the planning commission to confirm that their approach to the issue element eight, which measures identified alignment with their desires for the and on September eighth, draft element was reviewed, planning commission, and we also held a public then on October thirteenth, uh, was final planning commission where the final transport element was reviewed and recommended. Planning commission's major emphasis was pedestrian safety in our meetings, which was within it. Were seven goals that went along with this transportation element update that I want to go through really quick. Well, uh, the first goal was to develop a multimodal transportation system, multimodal meaning vehicular, pedestrian, bicycle, and transit. System that is consistent with land use element. And that serves the livability of North and Valley. Second goal, public and private transportation improvements that minimize adverse impacts of natural environment, air and water quality, public health and energy consumption, support of mobility options, including walking and biking. A third goal, manage the city's transportation system and develop improvements that minimize trips by single fourth goal, made a bicycle and pedestrian friendly environment throughout the city that connects neighborhoods to downtown cultural, historic, and recreational facilities, other transportation elements such as park and ride bots, transit routes, and include connectivity to the city of Snoqualmie. Fifth goal, public transportation system shall enable all persons to have reasonable access to locations of employment, healthcare, education, and community business. Sixth goal, operate street, a design in the development and redevelopment of North Bend streets, answer our scenic beauty, and help preserve our historic downtown and neighborhood. Seventh and final goal, establish appropriate levels of service for transportation facilities adequately served existing in we met with planning commission on October thirteenth, and they gave us the recommendation. We had not yet received regional comments in the plan. Uh, the comments that they brought in afterwards were very um minor. There was a few spelling errors, notes pointing to exhibits like that. Uh, but those those changes were in we often, we brought this element and to uh patient media on October recommended a session. City staff recommends moving forward with approval of this event update, condition that the environmental review, including CIPA, will be completed during the approval of the two thousand twenty-four and its entirety prior or
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Counsel, clarifying question?
I have a question, just a comment. That that was a excellent introduction. Just want to say there was a lot in there, and I appreciate that.
All right, additional clarifying question? All right. Member of the audience, which is comment. I see nobody here. How about online?
Sad.
All right, Mr. Thomas, you're up.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Sure, thank you. Uh, Mike Thomas, uh, twelve thirty-one La Forest Drive SE. Uh, I sent in some comments on this. You have my written comment. Uh, a bit concerned by this, and I would ask you really to defer action and on this and not adopt it until you actually adopt it as part of the comp plan. Um, one, I I noticed that it lacks a CIPA. Uh, many items in here call for the widening of sidewalks and increasing on amenity areas, and also the addition of bike lanes. and increasing on amenity areas, and also the addition of bike lanes. All that increases impervious surface area, which has a ton of environmental impacts, groundwater, water table, you know, et cetera. So the lack of a CIPA is suspect. Uh, so so one, that that to me is is a is a red flag to adopting this T E plan. Uh, my second comment is, um, I'm disturbed by, um, the the uh encouragement of pedestrian and cycling. Um, transportation as and sacrificing single vehicle use. And by the way, the single vehicle use can also be E V and not involve fossil fuels. So I I find that the the actual plan to be language to be pr- considerably improper. But what I am concerned about is many of us, such as myself, are reliant on the use of their single vehicles to get to stores, shopping, et cetera, because they're mobility limited. Uh, there's a problem with a plan that that really impairs the use of our vehicles that we need to access services. So I'm concerned about a plan that's really discouraging or decreasing parking and disfavoring single vehicle use. And then you're gonna have to look to like to hate to keep all three of these things in order to be fair to your citizens. Um, I understand, you know, also wanting to increase, you know, sidewalk widths in areas near schools. I did notice that, uh, there's an effort to increase some of these widths to be very high, very wide. I'm very concerned though about in certain areas that are highly treated, such as uh S E Cedar Falls Way, that uh your your efforts to increase sidewalk widths are gonna destroy even more trees and cause even more environmental damage. Um, and it loss of environment, you know, last losses cooling that you cannot address with compensatory mitigation. So again, a lack of CIPA, I'm just concerned concerned about that. Finally, in conclusion, also, I I uh not conclusion, but uh I'm also concerned about the over reliance on roundabouts. Um, I view that some of the roundabouts are becoming problematic and are not likely to meet L O S D, particularly the one by uh shopping in town, uh, you know, the one that's everyone uses by the post office, et cetera. I notice a lot of queuing. Uh, I feel that uh in the end, you may end up having signaled roundabouts or have to go back to signal intersections. And this is potentially wasting a lot of money and also wasting the objective that, you know, hey, it's improving traffic, but our traffic is so bad that we need to signal anyway. And I think as, you know, Mr. Rosen spoke earlier about, you know, hey, how can we try to save money? You know, are are we uh decommissioning uh signaled intersections such like the one by the mall in favor of a roundabout that ultimately will fail? Some of it concerned about the over reliance on roundabout and how do we maintain our L O L level of service in areas that are busy in town? That I that appear to be start becoming problematic.
Michael, if you can conclude your comments.
Thank you. I I my timer popping too, and thank you. I would hope that council would defer action and really consider to adopt this at the time of the comp plan adoption. Thank you very much for your comment and for consideration. So concludes my comment.
Any additional comments online? Thank you. All right.
Nothing I
Yes, please.
Again, yeah. I'm looking at the C. I'm I'm trying to understand the truck route. Does that change from the original truck route? We uh basically tried to keep off North Bend Way. There's the uh downtown area. Is that's because I can't tell by this picture whether we've extended our outs into there or not.
You're looking at exhibit here six on page twenty-two.
Yeah.
There is, I maybe you're looking at here, but there is no truck route is not air shown be north way. All right, to go.
It was hard to see by the
Yeah, yeah, it's not.
Additional clarifying question. Council member Loudon back, you're up. Motion.
Thank you, Your Honor. Motion to approve A B twenty-two dash one five eight, a resolution authorizing adoption of the transportation element update for two thousand twenty-four and comprehensive plan.
Have a second.
Second.
All right, Councilmember Loudon back.
I don't know. I think we should have, uh, Tom do that all over again. Uh, it it's a tremendous amount of work, uh, obviously coordinating and and working with the consultants on this to uh this document together. It is uh it's very comprehensive. It's well thought out. It's well vetted. Uh, I would recommend that we uh take a look at it tonight and and uh give it a due pass. This is just one of several elements that are going to be a part of the comprehensive plan. CIPA will be performed in two thousand twenty-four as a part of the entire comprehensive plan. And so that will be addressed as we move forward. And I, uh, again, would recommend it fast tonight.
Thank you, Russ. I, since I made the second, I'll simply put, thank you, staff. That's a considerable amount of work into this, and we appreciate the effort. I agree, and it's tonight. All right, uh, council, any comment?
No, if I may, I'm sorry.
Please.
Right. Is anyone able to address that the efficacy or efficiency of roundabouts? I can only begin to imagine if there were a stoplight today at Cedar Falls Way and North Bend Way, there would be traffic backed up all the way out of the east west side of town because of the backups and the inability of in there's trade-offs. There's lots of these roundabouts about in thinking planning that has taken place among staff and council and the inclusion and embracing of roundabouts both as safer, more efficient. So so many reasons, and and I just want to push back against the notion that stoplights is any way path forward in terms of efficiency and movement of traffic in this.
I add on a personal note.
Please.
Tonight, I little test for my uh traffic ability to come here in record time, not not exceeding the limit, the speed limit, just just so that's on a note noted out there. My home on Sixth Street, um, I would have turned left on North Bend Way in a typical night, decided not to do that, of course, and then went the back street to Second Street, then took the Downing Roundabout. I was here in less than about two minutes. It's record. That's never happened. So I appreciate them. Thank you.
I'd also add other thing. Oh, wow.
Point. Right. See, any additional questions? I have motion to approve A B twenty-two one fifty-eight, a resolution authorizing adoption of the transportation element update for two thousand twenty-four North and and all those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Those. Right, the vote is unanimous. Right, at this time, air council administrator concerns and initiatives. Start down there. Alan, you're up.
Um, I want to thank, uh, staff and everybody for putting together all this work we drew up today. Um, also wanted to say it was really nice to spend some time at there's another browsing, uh, presentation done by this downtown foundation along with the city. The downtown foundation took over most of that. It was the design when we first felt that, so kudos, and that was nice to see that. Um, but it was well tended for being really cold when, um, I'm sure that Mary, who was also a part of it, and we see will have some comments, but this is another great event along with all of the events that we have. I look forward to seeing those forward. Um, again, everybody, really happy holidays, since this is probably the last meeting before the new. So everybody, please help stay healthy holiday and knowing that during that holiday, your your kids are coming back from college. Please enjoy them while they're here too. Really focus. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Alan. There.
Yeah, Public Works Department. Well done. On the holiday lighting on North Bend Way, it looks beautiful. I'm hopeful that we can continue to add more festive lights in the coming years. Also, the snow removal, you worked hard and it didn't go unnoticed. Streets were safe and passable, and your hard work helped along the life.
Brendan.
Thank you. Um, first a concern. I I would like an update on the community survey. Um, we we put a lot of thought and blood, sweat and tears into that, and I feel like it's fallen off. I I think we should have an update of where we are in the launch plan, when we could expect data back. Um, so that's my my first concern. Um, second point is, uh, just speaking as a board member of Valley Center Stage, uh, there was a communication error, I guess, this last weekend. I was not at holidays. And uh V C S did not show up, so I can impart, I'm sure, what other board members and members of the theater community feel when we say we're sorry that there there was a gap in the timeline that was not intended, and we'll we'll figure out uh what happened there. Um, what it happened on the theater side because of the snow event, there was a lot of concern because there are actors coming in from Seattle and all over the place, so they had to make a call. Not, I'm not running the production this year, um, but they had to make a call uh early to inform people to be safe. So that's why they postponed the opening of A Christmas Carol, which is a new adaptation, and they weren't at holidays, so please forgive the theater for that. But come this next weekend for the actual opening of A Christmas Carol, Valley Center Stage is at the the gr- local Grange here, the Slough Grange. Third point is congratulations, new Pro Tem. It's an exciting, fun gig, and and it definitely broadens your horizons on how the council operates and and the effect that you can have, positive effect that you can have our relationship with the administration. So congratulations to you. And that, take care, everyone. Thank you.
Brendan.
Following on the flavor of the evening and acknowledging it's the last, uh, council meeting before the end of year, I wanna, I run, I wanna acknowledge, uh, Air Pro Tem Rosen for a year of excellent service, leadership this evening to a going meeting that actually I think has gone quite well. I wanna acknowledge city staff. It's been a long year coming out of the pandemic. There's been lots of turn within the city. There's been a number of onboarding by great new staff, Lisa Escobar and finance director and and others as well. There's very significant losses with consterperchur and others. We wouldn't be here without the dedication and commitment to a very remarkable group of people who do put the interests of the city and what do here. It isn't just a paycheck. It's heard of me. Much more significant commitment to that, and I believe that extends to law enforcement in this community as well. For that, we have lots to be thankful as we look forward to New Year. Thank you all.
You're here. Ross.
I would gladly seed the microphone to my seatmate to the right, who's Miss Miller.
Was saving the best for last.
Okay, here we go then. First of all, Heather, congratulations. I really think you're 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 gonna have a great time. Um, can't wait to see what the future brings, right? And Mr. Rosen, to my right, thank you very much for all the conversations we've had during this year. Very productive year, I might add. I thank you for your all your efforts as well. And to each and every one of my, uh, council members seated next to me on both sides, I want to say I appreciate appreciate all of you, all your efforts. I respect you immensely and wish you all the best at all times. Um, also, I want to thank our staff and all the departments, um, all the heads of the departments. Uh, I gotten to know most of you more and more through this past year, which I'm delighted to say I'm I'm impressed all the more. Um, also, thanks to Public Works and all the hard work this past week and a half with the snow. I think there was a definite change and shift from last year. Um, there were fewer complaints that I heard. Um, there's always ways we can get better at what we're doing, managing uh weather conditions that we are sometimes not able to control, right? But I think we're coming um a far fair distance, and I'm appreciative of that. Um, also, uh, holidays was a very bright and wild-weathered event. Um, we had a little bit of uh fire pits going south, south sideways at points, which was a little disconcerting, but people were uh full of joy and fun and the, uh, you know, I have to say I appreciate all the downtown foundations' efforts. Um, we gave, uh, Bria a day off and a on to do her new job as um communications director here. We really appreciate you at that level. Um, but it was fun to be be part of that um event, and I look forward to all the rest in the coming new year. Happy holidays, everybody.
Thank you, Mary. Miller, any comments for tonight?
I was crazy enough to go downtown in the uh in the bad weather and and Mary did a great job, and I loved the music that we got from our, uh, high school band. It was really, really festive. The lighting was excellent, and I do pass on kudos for the people who work twenty-four seven to keep the streets clean. Public Works guys did a great job. We've done a lot of debriefing. We've got more improvements to come, but they did a really fantastic job. So I think holidays came off really, really well, and I wish you all a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Thank you, David. All right, I've got a quite a bit here. Um, I had a conversation with Mr. Regos the other day that I think actually be helpful to share a little bit. We talked about snow removal. And I absolutely, we've come a long way. We've made significant progress. Um, as usual, our public works employees have been phenomenal. No questioning that. But there's always opportunities to improve. I think as we assess each additional storm, the frequency of these storms unfortunately is increasing. Things that we can do better and things that we can look at. Uh, in our conversation, we talked a little bit about the roundabouts, maybe some D I stuff. And I'm gonna just let Mr. Regos kind of repeat some of the things that he mentioned to me, which is, uh, hopefully a blueprint for ways to improve and move forward with our snow removal. Regos, if you don't mind.
Your Honor, um, yeah, this was a medium-sized snowstorm. It wasn't a baby. It have, depending on where you're at in the city, ten to inches of snow. I'd heard sixteen inches, so that's a pretty significant on Smolgin. I'm sure where we had two consecutive week sub.
Be careful early.
Yeah, don't jinx it, right? Um, so yeah, it was a medium-sized snowstorm, probably on the order of about a five-year. So, but as great. Lot of hard work. Highest great nation, everybody. Hundred percent. This year, we gave the roundabouts seem better than they were. Here. Um, we did try our ceramic. A lot of snow. Seemed to or several decades old. More of those. This was our second year of purchase of snow last year. It went down the so it was a it's a bit of a setback for us. But I'm gonna get that up and running again. Do you have internal sources if very available to us? Cities or back five those on this. Plus so like move forward with three more ceramic. It's another thing that I do is we get these larger snowstorms. Maybe an amended kind of imbler, turn lighter on our feet. Out of sense, we have employees might be able to have instead of poor snow was running the streets. Saying we need to new snow aids, directation, pertinences, so that we trucks low investment. Let's try to once that ice even much harder to get off. Fresh snow, we we also small amount of salt slicer that we're also on I toured both cities on Wednesday morning. Cities. Most snow. We receive more snow in North. Me didn't. I noticed it since I live in Issa, that each mile I travel east, Missico, at about quarter inch of snow to get to North Bend. Eighteen to exit thirty-one, that close east inches of snow. Um, I was proud of our guys. The morale was great days in, so uh, ready for the next one.
Thank you, Mark. I really appreciate that update and the work continuing to assess and adapt as we need to move forward. So thank you. A couple of things on my list here. Let's see. Um, well, Mr. Elwood's comment, it would have been helpful to have that community survey and Mr. Elwood's comment, it would have been helpful to have that community survey in front of us tonight. Assisted me at least. Like to thank Bree Citizen Academy. I think you are heading that up. We're going to see some information coming out in very near future, but this is a great program. That allows citizens to get involved and learn about. Government. And thank you so much for doing this and working on this. I think it's going to be great. To the community and I strongly encourage those who are interested participate. Obviously, information about signing up and all that will be coming out in very near future, but I wanted to give you a shout out and thank you. Thank you to the council. I really appreciate the opportunity of serving as Pro Tem this past year. And it was an honor to serve and thank you. Either you're going to do a phenomenal job. Any questions you'd ask, we're all here for you. Make sure I heard everything. Oh. Folks, take a look at this. This is our packet tonight. The city clerk that works incredibly hard on this, this might be a record, I'm believing. We're we're darn close to it. So if things get out an hour late once in a while, understand this takes so much work and. Know we all appreciate the effort you make and thank you for getting these things out. Such a timely matter. Greatly appreciated, yes. And I also would like to echo thank you to our staff for great year as of all work incredibly hard and we appreciate all your effort. Done without you. Mark, I agree with you, Senator. These you guys work above and beyond and have a passion for what you do. It's not just. All right, I have paperwork in front of me that I should go through, so I will do that and. Move along and so we can get out of here. All right, council, we're going to be canceling our regular city council meeting of December twentieth. And the council work city of December twenty seven. City invites residents and business to make the city shine bright this holiday season as a third annual light up North and Holiday Lighting Contest returns. Those interested in registering for the contest can find out more in the news section of the city website. Registration deadline is this Thursday, December eighth. The city is seeking nominations for the twenty twenty three Citizen of the Year. Right? It's twenty twenty two. Okay, that's point. I thought it was to be January. All right, twenty twenty two. Yeah, there you go. The nominations must be for North Bend resident or business on above and beyond to make North Bend a better place to live. Through professional or volunteer efforts or by extraordinary contribution to the community. Information on how to submit a nomination is available on the news section of the city website. Also available on the city website is an updated map of the city's snowplow routes, which include new neighbors, hoods and streets. The map identifies. Priority one, two and three snowplow routes throughout the city limits as well as priority access locations. Local artist Sarah Hughes, owner of company A, inch different and graduate of Two Rivers School collaborated with. The Raph owner of the new North End business called. On Main and Two River School to design an outdoor mural on the wall of two oh eight Main Avenue South. Location. Rest on main. Students collaborate with Sarah to design a colorful detail mural is nearly finished now. Thank you to all involved. Wonderful community effort. Thank you very much. We appreciate. With that, folks, I know if I pick up this scab, it'll Susie'll plunge across the table and kill me, so I wouldn't even consider it. We have an executive session. We will now recess for the meeting of executive session to discuss potential litigation pursuant to R C W two thirty. Ten one dash I. Executive session is expected to last thirty minutes. As there is no action anticipated as a result. Session, the videotaping of the meeting will stop.